I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Madrid.
Here.
Mary Garcia.
Here.
Gloria Rodriguez.
Here.
And Jesse Gander.
Here. Go ahead.
Public hearing, item number four, public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting official forms for initiative, referendum, and recall, clarifying schedules and procedures for obtaining and submitting petitions and other matters to be made.
Mary. Go ahead.
I make a motion to set the forthcoming rules to set the timetable for 30 minutes, in which case the public hearing will automatically commence.
Thank you. Mr. Madrid.
Yes.
Mary Garcia.
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Jesse Gander.
Yes.
We have our first speaker.
I'm going to go ahead and open. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing. Go ahead.
Open at 5:31. First speaker is Luki Ramos. Mr. Ramos, you have three minutes.
No.
Not anymore. Mayor Council, I would just like to say that being that this is public, open information and how important it is that we let the community know, I was looking at the Texas transparency on transparency, local government transparency, see how local governments are stepping up and tells Texas to give taxpayers like you a transparent look at where your money goes, who has a budget online, who shows detailed expenses, who is setting the standard. We're tracking just how transparency these county school districts and other special districts across the state are with your hard-earned dollars. Texas comptroller Susan Combs recommends that all local governments implement financial transparency by posting three key financial documents online, the annual budget, the annual financial report, and the check register. We need to bring back that trust, to know where it's supposed to be open government, and it is an accountable government. Where does our money go? You pay for your government, and you deserve to know how it spends your money. So I'm thankful for our Texas government that has provided us those tools, as same as for public information on the 2010 book says here by the Attorney General of Texas, Rick Abbott, dear fellow Texans, government transparency and openness are fundamental to American democracy. In Texas, the Public Information Act, the act is one of the primary mechanisms by which members of the public hold the government accountable. As Attorney General, I am committed to educating citizens and government officials about their rights and obligations under Texas open government laws. Our desire is to strengthen the public's trust in government by helping government officials conduct their public business responsibly and transparently. Tools such as this help us meet this obligation, and we importantly foster a government that operates by, for, and in full view of the people. Part one, how the Public Information Act works, its historical background is of Texas Public Information Act, was adopted in 1973 by the Reform 96th Legislature. The Sharpton scandal, which occurred in 1969 and came to light in 1971, provided the motivation for several enactments opening up government to the people. Policy, the policy construction, the preamble of the Public Information Act is quoted by the section 5, 520.00 line of the government code. It declares a basis for the policy of open government expressed in the Public Information Act. It finds it a basis in the American constitutional form of representative government and the principle that government is a servant and not the master of the people. It further explains this principle in terms of the need for the informed citizen group. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants a right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. The purpose of the Public Information Act is to maintain the people's control over the instruments they have created. The act requires the office of the Attorney General to construe the act liberally in favor of open government. I do know that you were supposed to have posted these public hearings. I still say that one public hearing is not enough for our community, it's very important that they maintain informed, and if you really represent us, I would have really loved to see you post at least an eight-by-ten like you did when you canceled a meeting. The same thing should go for our community, not this size, please. I cannot even read it, I can't even read it with even my reading glasses. I have to capture, please, make it a little bit larger. But I will tell you, there's something wrong with Councilwoman District Two. I think it's important that you understand the importance, we're asking for respect. So please, don't interrupt me, I just want you to know that this is important. We are learning as citizens to learn our rights and our obligations to know when something is happening in our city, such as this ordinance. We should have had that in place a long time ago. However, I'm sorry to not interrupt me, you're going against your own ordinance. It's very important that we know what we need to do in order to move forward as a city and as citizens, and that who we place on those seats will respect us. So I ask you that if I can inform myself within the state and the rules, and I ask for your respect as well, that you respect us and learn about it as well, as how to go about informing your citizens. Because I feel that, once again, we were not given the opportunity to place something, and that means you could have put it more than you just might place. It could have been placed, like many other cities do, in different information centers, clinics, offices, you name it, the big aid everywhere, Walmart, to make sure that our community would have known, who do we have here? I'm sure that if they didn't see that small act in El Castle Times, I'm sorry, but that is so wrong.
Ralph Cora.
The ordinance that you all are proposing tonight is basically changing what's already in the charter. Item number, or section 7, 13, form of recall petition is already in our city charter. Article seven, as initiative referendum and recall, is in the charter, it doesn't need to be redone, and from what I understand, the charter cannot be superseded by any ordinance by the city. We have to go by the charter. And if the form is already there, the only way to change that form is through a charter amendment election, which has not been called for. The only thing that's been called for is an ordinance to change everything. Anytime this council doesn't like something that's going on, they put an ordinance. They didn't like that people were exercising their free speech during a meeting, so they put an ordinance. They don't like that the recall is taking longer than 45 days, so they put an ordinance. So what I'm asking you is, leave things as they are. If you want to change them, do them the proper way, by ordinance, by, not by ordinance, but rather by election, which is what is called for. There's even a case law regarding this. You have it, you have both forms, you have them in front of you, you can see that in the city charter, the form is already there, you're adding 45 days to it. So you're changing the city charter, which you cannot do. I know that you've probably been told, yeah, we can probably get away with it, but tomorrow morning, I'm going to send copies of our charter and the proposed changes to our charter to the Attorney General to get a ruling, because there was already a ruling subsequent to that, and I don't want to take everybody else's time. But opinion number JC0187 addresses this, and it says that you cannot supersede the charter by ordinance, which is what they're trying to do tonight. And by, when was it, last Thursday was the first reading, today's the second reading with a public hearing, and tonight you're going to adopt it. In other words, you're streamlining everything to your advantage, so nobody can know what's going on, and we can't even get, the proper thing would be to get the legal opinion from the Attorney General whether this is correct or not, but that's not being done. It's going to be ran through us, you know, slam bam, thank you ma'am, three steps, and it's done. This is what this council is doing, and it's not serving the people a support. You're serving yourselves. You're doing, you're not giving us the opportunity to absorb what is being said, you're not giving us the opportunity to get the legal opinion about what you're doing. It's going to be done overnight. In the course of seven days, this is already, this will already be an ordinance. I don't know of any city that I've seen that runs ordinances that fast, other than the reason, the only reason I can see that you want to run this ordinance through us is because you don't want the citizens to know what's going on, and that's not what you were elected for. Our city has got serious problems, and we need serious people to take care of them, and this is not the right way to do things. You need to give the citizens a chance to absorb the ones that are listening, you need to make sure what you're doing is legal. Did anybody, I don't even think anybody checked with the Attorney General to see if you can supersede our city charter by changing the language of what's already in there. Nowhere do I see 45 days anywhere in the charter. On page 33, Article seven is over in there, there's a symbol, but yet you're choosing to put it in there because you don't like what's going on. So before you all vote tonight, let's see if somebody on the council has got a conscience who's going to check on this first. Let's see if you table this item to check the legality of it through the state. That's what I'd like to see. I will, you know, time will tell tonight if we're going to, if we're going to have responsible government, or if we're going to have government that's going to ram everything down our throats. Thank you.
Madre Garcia.
First and foremost, District number four, by leaving during council meeting last week, it is so, so you, unprofessional, arrogant, and of course self-serving, but I expect it from you. District number two, where were you when the constituents in your district asked for a quantity of life issues, flooding, lights, driveway, sidewalks, infrastructure? You were too busy doing District number four's favor, appointing his dad's fancy city manager forty-seven thousand dollar rate, replacing a area creation director with being locust at forty thousand, zero experience, giving all 220 driveways to District number four instead of to the most needed in your district, replacing four-year judge with District number four's rent with twenty-seven dollar rate and benefits, zero experience, giving your vote to buy seven acres for 1.6 million dollars. Do you know what 1.6 million dollars will do for your district and the rest of the city? And now you know we are supposed to recalling you and the others, aware to the point that you are going door-to-door trying to garnish votes and promising lies, lies anywhere and everywhere, too little late. Also, city manager, if we had such a surplus, why did you try to get a loan in the school district for one million dollars? In this, you were turned out. Furthermore, other issues, by opening the bridge at Patsmore, you acted recklessly and with disregard to the safety of the public, the same public you are supposed to be representing. Shame on you.
Senator Hahn.
In a sense, I agree with all the people, the people that are making this change, they are changing the constitution, right? Creating new laws, for me, it's not good. It's true, we have to also depend on our citizens, not just them, the citizens, that they want to do what they want to do. They don't respect our citizens, respect this constitution, right? They are violating our citizens' rights. At every moment, they do what they think is right, for your sake. In regard to that, for that, we wanted to do it here, to make something right for us, but it turns out that here, everything goes the other way. It's a sense of disrespect to our citizens, and then they don't put them, they don't program anything for the people to notice, for that, we are here alone, because everyone does it secretly, and that's not good. We need the citizens to notice, through an announcement on the internet, but they don't put them, they change the schedules and all that, and that, for me, is a lack of respect to our citizens. For that, it's a sense of disrespect, that we don't see what they're doing, because as we put them, we can also remove them. Nothing is there, not here. This is past, all of us. It's just, for example, I want you to consider that, and try to work as it should be, and not just changing laws, do what they have to do to our citizens, the gas, the maintenance, and all the rest that is necessary, not just working, not just following laws. Invest the money that we put in, so that we have a sovereign city to live in.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this side?
My name is Senator Cox, I'm former councilman in Seashore. As I have stated, I've been here as a former city councilman, I did two terms for four years. In those four years, several issues came up in which we wanted to change some of the, what the city charter had to say. We wanted to change some of the stipulations of, such as the rule of three, we wanted to change other issues that we were not allowed to. We were not allowed to, because we had to form a committee before and look at and study issues so that we can make amendments to this city charter. Twice in those two years' terms, I asked our city attorney at the time, Mr. Wallace, I asked him to give us a ruling on changing the reading and the writing of the city charter issue, and he informed us about once, but twice, that an ordinance cannot and will not supersede, by law cannot supersede, the city charter and its rules. Cannot do it. This is the same advice that came from Mr. Wallace, our city attorney at the time, and why this is being happened, why it's happening now, I don't understand. It doesn't matter that you put in the hearing that it's going to be adopting official forms for initiatives, referendum, recall, that's already addressed in the city charter. Recalling, clarifying schedules and procedures, clarifying needs nothing more than to change something. You're changing what's already addressed in the city charter, and you can't do it. You have to have a meeting, a committee, the committee that I formed, and we did four amendments to the city charter, where Almufa Salazar, Alma Fuentes, myself, Mr. Jodi Toro, and one other individual, I can't remember his name right now, it's time, but we formed a committee to address how we wanted to make the amendments in the city charter. We followed the law. The wording and clarification and all that other stuff, all that means nothing more than just wanting to make a change, a change that you have to take to the voters. So I know that you guys are pushing for this, I also know, I also see that it says here a second reading or adaptation of the ordinance. What happened to past practice? The past practice was that we would have, we would call for the public hearing, we would have a two-week between, for the first hearing, and then we'd have another two weeks between the first hearing and the second hearing. What happened there? Why has everything changed now where you have a second reading on the very same day that you had the public hearing as on the first reading? That also is wrong. You have been misinformed, and you have been misled, as I stated before. These changes that are being asked of you, and you've not complied with this, is wrong. I don't care how learned the individual is, it's telling you you can do this, I'm sorry, it's addressed in the Texas criminal code and law, in the government code, it's addressed there, it's in black and white. I guess the only way, the only thing is, if we pass this thing through, I guess you're going to have to spend some more money, because you're going to have to defend this issue here, because it will get challenged, and it's going to be money that's going to cost the citizens six decisions for, the taxpayers, and so forth, all over again, because you guys are erroneously, erroneously pushing an issue that you can't do. Once again, I will ask you, and I will tell you this, understanding, you cannot supersede the city charter with an ordinance. This attorney here, that advising you now, was the same attorney that advised us then when I was sitting in that chair right there. Not only did I ask it, but also Mayor Tringolfo, who was standing there, and he made it, when he said it, and I'm going to refresh Mr. Wallace's memory, because he tried to say, can an ordinance supersede the city charter, but instead, he said, can an ordinance supersede an ordinance? And of course, Mr. Wallace had no choice but to say, yes, it can, because he was talking about the city charter itself, and then he corrected himself later on, saying, I mean the city charter, knowing full well that I had already asked that two or three minutes before. So be careful, please be careful. You're supposed to be leader of this community, you're supposed to be looking out for the taxpayers, you're supposed to be looking out for us. You went door-to-door, knocking on the doors, telling people that you were going to make changes, better changes than what was going on back then. I'm sorry, but it's been nothing in trouble ever since. Something's wrong, you guys are not being informed correctly, or you're taking the wrong path. You need to get back up, you need to back up, you need to take a really long, hard look at what's going on right now, what's happening right now, and where you've been taken, okay? While I'm talking about that, let me tell you about the misleading portion of the council. I have gone out to District Four, and in the area of Cholotichis and Trail and other areas, there are driveways going up that are not part of that list of 220 driveways that are on there. They're going up, they've been put in place. I asked those people, they said, no, we didn't pay for it, we went and complained about it, we got put on the list, and now we got a driver, even though they were not on that original 220 list that you guys approved, that you other district members gave up so that he could have that in his district, okay? It's being abused. All you guys are trying to do this, I don't know. What you guys are doing, I don't know. But you have a watchdog, you have a watchdog group, you have me as a watchdog, I'm telling you guys, you just get your act together. That's all I have to say for then. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Close.
During, these people are about the ordinance or the charter, superseding the ordinance or the law, what's the ruling on that?
Now's not the time when we get into the actual motion and the idea, right now's public hearing.
I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing.
Close at 5:52.
Now, I'm turning the same question.
The.
We are item six, too bad.
Didn't it hundred for that? More than hundred. Number five, breaking your agenda, item number five, discussion and action on approval for the proposed indoor local participation agreement between the local government purchasing cooperative and the city of Socorro, Texas. We do have a motion made by Jesse Gander, a second made by Gloria Rodriguez, and this is to approve item number five. Mr. Madrid.
Yes.
Mary Garcia.
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Jesse Gander.
Yes.
Item number six, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting official forms for initiative, referendum, and recall, clarifying schedules and procedures for obtaining and submitting petitions and other matters to be made.
Go ahead.
Mayor, the city council does not have the authority to change or amend the city charter by ordinance, it's very clear. State law in that regard is very clear. The city council cannot amend the city charter by ordinance, even if the city charter authorizes the city council to amend the city charter by ordinance, because there is a state law that prescribes the process by which you amend the city charter. That being said, Socorro city charter within itself authorizes the city council to do anything by ordinance which is not in conflict with the city charter. The ordinance that you have before you sets out the various sections of the city charter that deal with initiative, referendum, and recall. Section 7.2 is the section that provides for the referendum process, and the city charter also provides that the forms for this are to be provided by the city clerk. There are no forms, there are no petitions in the city charter. There are parts of affidavits that would go into the form that are prescribed by the city charter, but there are no petition forms in the city charter anyway. There is a lot of information in the city charter about how to put those forms together, a considerable amount of it in conflict with itself, and one of the things that this is designed to do is to hopefully bring some clarification to that process. One of the issues in section three is the referendum. The city charter requires somebody that's submitting a referendum petition to swear that the signatures are no more than 45 days old, but the city charter also says that if the signatures are more than 30 days old, that the petition is void. It is highly misleading to somebody that's circulating the petition to make them swear that the signatures are no more than 45 days old, and then they hand them in to the city clerk, and they find out their entire petition's void because it shouldn't have been handed in 30 days earlier. We can't change that language in the city charter by ordinance, that's clear, but you do have the authority by the city charters to do the things that the city charter does not speak to. What this is an attempt to do is to lay out some specific forms that helps this process. Now, I will readily admit that these forms are cumbersome, they got a lot of information on them, and the way that you got to put them together, and because of the regulations in the city charter, you can only get two signatures on each form, but everything on here is required by the city charter. The individuals required to print their name, they're required to provide their street address, they're required, the only thing on here that's not required is the phone number, and it seemed to be good to add the phone number in case there was some question about something, so the city clerk would know how to find this person in the process of reviewing the petition. Their date of birth has to be on here, their precinct number and name has to be on here, their voter registration serial number has to be on here, all of that's required in the city charter. So this is not something that is in conflict with the city charter, it is something that is consistent with it. The, you will note that the affidavits for the, for the initiative petition certify that the signatures are no more than 45 days old, the same affidavit is on the referendum petition. The reason that form of affidavit is there is because the city charter prescribes that form, even though if those signatures are more than 30 days old, they're worth in the city way, because the city charter also says that if they're more than 30 days old, the petition's void. So I would gladly answer any specific questions, but that basically, and what we try to do in sections two and three and four, is to lay out in somewhat of an understandable process, at least the process of getting the petition to the city clerk. Unfortunately, the city charter has conflicts as to how it's handled once it's sent to the city clerk, and the timelines with when the things are supposed to be done in that type thing. Again, that's not something you can correct by ordinance. So I would gladly answer any specific questions, but that's basically what it does.
I looked over, and I like to, there's a few little, some of it is to clean up the ordinance, communication ordinances up. I'll make a motion to approve the following corrections. On page three or four, where it begins the first ordinance, where it says, in the desire of the city council to clarify and then the deletion of the clarified procedures and deletion of the, so we'll read, where it says, in the desire of the city council to clarify procedures and schedule for obtaining and submitting petitions and our documents are so listed with the initiative referendum recall, so we're deleting two buzz there. On, on section two, it'll read initiative petitions as a header, and then it'll go into the following language that's already there. A petitioner's committee must be formed and filed and have to be able to city clerk prior to serve the meeting, and in the addition of the word initiative, capital P for petitions. Skip the following sentence, onto the next one where it says, all petitions shall be on form supplied and released upon written request with the addition of the petitioner's committee. with the addition of, of the petitioner's committee", and, and then, uh, farther on, skipping the, the next sentence. After it says, "I'm gonna read, "All executed petitions shall be returned and filed with the city clerk over forty-five days of the date on which the initial petition, petitions is or signed and released by the city clerk, or the city clerk does not meet its specified period. The addition of the executive, the executed petitions must be accompanied by affidavit of the person filing petition for the petition bearers and stated number of signatures, and if the signatures are genuine signatures of the person whose name they claim to be as a petition released prior to adoption of this ordinance. Timeline shall start from the date this ordinance is adopted." Going on to section three, it'll begin with referendum petitions and the title, and then it'll go to the reading, "A petitioner's committee must be formed and filed an affidavit, the city clerk fires circulating petitions", skipping to the, skipping the sentence to, "All petitions shall be on form supplied and released upon written request of the petitioner's committee", shall be added. Uh, skipping to page four of four, at the second complete sentence, it says, "The executed petitions must be accompanied by affidavit of, the addition of the word the, person", so ran the word the. Uh, moving on to section four, it'll have the title of recall petitions. Skipping to the second sentence, it shall be, "All petitions shall be on form supplied and released upon written request of the petitioner's committee", that will be added, those four words. Skipping, uh, right before the last sentence on section four, the addition of this sentence, "As two petitions released prior to adoption of this ordinance, timeline shall start from the date this ordinance is adopted", and going down to the very bottom, where it says, "Do you re-pass and approve this, twenty-seventh day of January, two thousand eleven", and that's my motion. I, I'd also like to clarify for the city council. We hear a lot of information, I mean, everybody gets up here and says, "We've done this, and we've done that", and, I mean, I, I just spend all day just, just picking out where all the lies are in all those statements. It's a shame one of them left because I was gonna address one of the statements they said where, where they looked at this council and they said, "You need to do what's right, you need to do what, what we've done in the past. We've never done a public hearing and a second reading at the same time", and that was by a former city council member. I wanna, I wanna remind him that, um, April first, two thousand ten, and I'll read that out. On April first, two thousand ten, the city council met for a public hearing on amendment number four to ordinance one thirty-nine, number thirty-one, and ordinance entitled historic landmark preservation for the city of Socorro, Texas, sponsored by Seko Cox. That was agenda item number five on the April first, two thousand ten meeting, and on agenda item number nine of April first, two thousand ten, second reading and adoption of amendment number four to ordinance one thirty-one and ordinance entitled historic landmark preservation for the city of Socorro, Texas, sponsored by Seko Cox. It was passed on a three, uh, zero, uh, vote, with myself being absent at that meeting. So, again, when they sat up here, and, and I mean, just time after time, it's, it's lies after lies, and he told us, "You need to do what this city council has done previously. We have never held a public hearing and a second reading adoption on the same day", and here I just claim facts where, obviously, on April first, two thousand ten, his own items have been sponsored, so I'm gonna go back to, I'm, I'm, you know, how do you fight liars? But, you know, you can't, unfortunately, you can only bring up facts, and hopefully, it doesn't fall on dead ears. So, again, that's my motion.
Mr. Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Jesse Gant. Number, item number seven, it's to the council members.
Motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I need to make two quick comments, sorry. First of all, I did visit with, with the school district relative to our sidewalk project, and had a good discussion with superintendent lawyer and his executive official. And they, they asked me to submit in writing what the city's request was. Subsequent to that, we learned through TextDigm that all the financial arrangements and letting of the contract for the contractor to build those sidewalks is gonna be handled by TextDigm. And they were gonna manage all the cash flow that needs to occur relative to those eight school projects to get their sidewalks here in the future. So the, my main point of clarification is, the city was not turned down, it was unnecessary. Thank you.
We do have a motion made by Jesse Gant, and a second made by Gloria Rodriguez to, uh, be the item number seven, Mr. Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Jesse Gant.
Yes.
Do, do we have a motion for executive motion?
You have a second device?
Yes.
Second.
We do have a motion made by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Jesse Gant, and this is to move into executive session, Mr. Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Jesse Gant.
Yes.
We will move into executive session at six oh six.